...Moss and 642 Cedar Street. Representative Hayden and ladies and gentlemen, councilors, this is Mayor. I wanted to say that I know Matt Cox, I've been in Cox personally. I worked with him for four years as a retired police officer. And Matt Cox is of impeccable character, he's an outstanding individual. And then I liked the last RFP that was connected here today. And I want to encourage the council to pick one of those two. Thank you.
Chris, yeah, 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 yeah. You know most people yelling at me. Okay, let me get back on here. Thank you very much. So now we're gonna get, is this, are you hearing me back there? Oh, that's better, okay. So let's get back on to our agenda, let's do the consent agenda. And are there any corrections to the agenda? I believe, are you okay?
Yeah.
You wanna do that? Organize?
Remove some stuff.
What? Did we give you too much paper?
Somebody did.
Yes, Paul?
Give him so much paper.
Oh, too much paper.
But we all, I can't answer all of them, but I can.
I believe, yeah.
Okay, we're Chrissy Hollitt, we're the...
What page are you on?
Let's see, let's see what it is. This was for when we, after we made amendments.
Yeah, what page?
Don.
Oh, I can figure out.
Okay.
Page nine of fourteen.
Page nine.
Okay.
Thank you.
RFP approved.
Right. When the vote was made, it wasn't put in at all.
The six zero?
Six zero wasn't put in.
Can't hear you back here. The six zero on the vote for when we vote, the list.
Can't hear me either. There you go.
Gonna have to yell.
You can tell.
Is it on page nine, right above ten point five?
Yes.
So he's, he's talking about the six zero. So when we vote, at the end of where it lists who voted what, they'll put how many voted for and how many against. So that's what he's referencing.
Is that the only change?
Is that the only change?
No, I have changes.
Okay, Chrissy.
Under mayor comment.
Use your microphone, Chrissy. Please.
Under mayor comments.
What page?
That's page, page three.
On page two, where it says Mayor Holston said we have some changes. At the end of that, it should be added that Mayor Holston stated that after planning and library that we would extend the application period for the remaining committees and we would take care of that in the meeting of the board. Do you remember that?
I don't even know where you are. I'm sorry, I just gotta be really honest here.
Towards the top.
Page three?
Two.
Two, page two.
Of the minutes.
At the top?
Towards the top, it says Mayor Holston said we would have some changes to the agenda. And in there, you stated that we would take care of the library ward and the planning commission. And then also at the end of that, you said that we would extend the application period for the remaining committees, and that's not on there.
Okay, so I think that, I think that you are right, but I think that Jackie will need to check that. If it isn't, frankly, my memory isn't that good.
I verified by listening. The next one is under public comment, under Don Reisman. That statement that is written there under Don Reisman is not actually what Don said. So I would like that corrected to what he actually said. Like he brought that paperwork, he didn't address any people in particular. That is on page two.
That's same, under public comment. So just take a look at that and see. I don't think that it's inaccurate, but, but I agree if that's not what was said.
No, it is not what was said.
Thank you.
And then the last one I have is on page thirteen.
Where abouts?
At the top, it says Councilor Hollitt asked if she could nominate herself. That is incorrect, I did not say that.
I wondered if you said that.
No, I did not. I said, what if we have an interest in the seat? I listened to the recording.
Okay. Okay, so just as instructional for the, for council. As you go through and you find mistakes, or you think that, that need correction, it is absolutely appropriate to just email the city administrator so that some of those, if they can be easily corrected, can be easily corrected before we come here. It's certainly absolutely okay at any time for you to bring it up here. But as a courtesy, if we know it ahead of time, that just makes life easier for everyone. So, but thank you. So with that, can we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to consent, to make a motion to accept the consent agenda first.
I second.
Bobby seconded. Call for the vote.
Councilor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councilor Hadley?
Aye.
Councilor Whitney?
Aye.
Councilor Berenbourn?
Aye.
Councilor Holcomb?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye. Thank you. So now we're gonna move on to the sale of the OIP property. That is an additional piece of paper that you were given today at your desk, correct? Okay, so let's get to that point. And city administrator, Mr. Messina, will you proceed from there?
Mayor and council, I know that our work session, we talked about the agenda and we talked about how we really urge everyone not to bring items at the last minute to the council meeting. However, since this is an important property sale and it's often difficult to get the buyer and the city and the title company all together at the same time, this landed in yesterday. So, and actually, this has been being worked on since probably August. The original sale agreement was initialed by Mayor Rowland. It's been discussed in the ODAC. And now, I will, I'll read my background. The realtor of record has negotiated the sale of two lots in the Oak Ridge Industrial Park to Jim Bray of Texas Pride Trailers. Mr. Bray is purchasing the property to construct, construct their retail sales, and I'm sorry, I should say retail sales and wholesale sales facility for his expanding business. Texas Pride currently manufactures the trailers in Texas and are expanding their retail into the Pacific Northwest. Once the retail is operating, Mr. Bray's intent is also to construct the manufacturing facility on the OIP property. Mr. Bray intends to improve the property by constructing a new building, improve the existing building, add office space, and fence the property. Mr. Bray anticipates three or four new jobs at first, and more if they do develop the manufacturing equipment. The terms of the sale, it's a cash sale, four hundred thousand dollars for two lots left, thirty-five and thirty-six. After real estate brokerage, ESCO, escrow fees and title charges, it would be three hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty cents to the OIP fund. And we feel strongly that this would really be a spark plug that we should really get some more development going in the OIP.
Well, having read the staff report, at this point, if there are any public comments, I will entertain them briefly. Is there any? You don't have your hand up, do you?
No.
Okay, that's all right. Just checking. Okay, so in order to entertain any discussion, can we have a motion for, just a moment? Okay, guys, be quicker on the spot. Mr. Moe?
This might be a bunny trail, but from my experience, several years ago when I was on the council, we ran into a real problem. And that was with some of the contamination that was up in that area.
Okay.
I don't wanna see Oak Ridge jump into this, and next thing you know, we're eating caca. And don't wanna see that happen. So that's just kinda what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ball?
I just wanna make sure that the purchase of this property doesn't exclude the members of purchasing any other properties within this OIP from use of the railroad spur.
So you wanna know how this involves the rail, railroad spur?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that other properties in the OIP aren't excluded from using the railroad spur
Okay, we'll address that.
by this company purchasing the access point, so make sure there's an easement.
Okay.
That's what I'm worried about.
Okay, we will, we will definitely discuss that. Motion? Can I have a motion, so that we can discuss this?
I'll make the motion to discuss.
Thank you. So you wanna, to approve the res, is that what you wanna do with this motion?
Yes.
Okay, so approving this resolution and sale, whoa, 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 whoa. I move we approve resolution zero-one-two-nineteen, twenty nineteen, authorizing the mayor and city administrator to complete the sale of city-owned property to Mr. Jim Bray of Texas Pride Trailers. I hear a second. Bobby seconded. Council discussion. Okay, so, go for it.
What are we gonna do with the money?
We go into the OIP funds until council decides. There's plenty of projects, there's water and sewer extensions that need to happen. We've been talking about the possibility of a master plan, a new master plan for the entire OIP. We'll probably have some good discussions during budget about what to do with it.
And, and so let's also address the railroad spur. In this agreement, and I, please correct me if I say this all wrong, because I think I'm about to do it. There's, so there are two railroad spurs in these two lots. The one that is westerly most is actually being abandoned and is part of the sale. The one that is easterly most is actually, we have an easement for that. The city has an easement, it's within the property that's being purchased, but the city has an easement to that, to that spur. And the map that I gave, that was passed out, that is colored, shows that easement. You'll also see kind of a green line going through there, that is a water easement. That is our drainage, water, stormwater drainage, right Rick? Okay, so that is also there, and...
That's an easement for us to get to?
Yes, yes. So that has been considered and taken care of. Mr. Moe, your question about contamination, we have a letter from the DEQ saying this is all said and done, and releasing it for sale. And then we also have a letter from the USDA allowing us to sell this.
Very good.
Any other discussion? Okay, can we call for a vote?
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councilor Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilor Hollitt? Councilor Berenbourn?
Aye.
Councilor Whitney?
Aye.
Councilor Hadley?
Aye.
And that passes. I am so happy. Good job. Oh, we have more in the meeting. Oh, yes. Okay, so where are we? Consent agenda, business of the city council. Okay, so this is an opportunity, councillors, if you have anything that you wanna bring up to discuss, and we'll move forward.
I have one item.
Do you have the mic? Mr. Hadley?
I just wanted to bring up, what are we doing about a supplemental budget? And where are we with that process?
Okay, I think we can address that question to Mr. Messina, and he can answer that.
We've started, we're working with some of the seniors. Do some preliminary work with this, it'd probably be thirty days. In February, in front of coun, in front of council?
Okay, that is your question?
That was my question.
So any other, other council business that have, you wanna bring forward? Okay, I have one thing that I wanna bring forward. So, so what I wanna just do is, I would like to apologize to the councillors who were sworn in at the last meeting. It was less than smooth, and it was a little, it was a little bumpy. I was embarrassed that we didn't have a very clean and, and what should have been a momentous occasion kind of turned unexpectedly uncomfortable. And so I would like to apologize personally to the council for, for that occurrence. I would also like to ask the city administrator to work with myself and with staff to create a template for any future swearing-in ceremony so that this won't happen again. Because we do have someone that, or whoever that will be, in February, will be sworn in at the end to take the seat that I vacated. So that's all the comment that I have to say there. And we will move on to business from the city administrator.
Mayor and councils, I've put together a small packet from your agenda to, so we can get started with the, sorry, with the recruitment for the next city administrator. I put together a draft schedule. I'm hoping to get, well, I'm hoping, my goal is to get an advertising started maybe by February. And we could talk later, I know we've got a pretty long meeting tonight. We can certainly talk later about just all the nuts and bolts and when things are gonna happen. But anticipating, taking applications up into mid-April, interviews probably mid-May, and make a decision by June. Depending on the quality or the type of candidate you get, they may need more than two weeks' notice. So give them a full month of June to give notice, move here, and start July first. That all may be a little optimistic, but that's what we're gonna work towards right now. I'll also just put some extra reading in there for you, traits of good leaders, how to successfully recruit a city manager in the 21st century, it is getting more difficult. Believe it or not, not everyone wants this job, I can't understand why. And it's more reflection on, on Oak Ridge or Oregon, it's just very difficult to recruit right now. I think, you know, if you've read my resume, I worked for the Proffman Company online for about a year. I also asked Proffman, just, would you give us just a proposal? So there's also a proposal in there, so you can see what a recruiting firm, a professional recruiting firm, we're probably looking at twelve to twenty thousand dollars to do a full recruitment. We're gonna hopefully do as much as we possibly can in-house. Also, there's a job, I did, actually found a job description for the Oak Ridge City manager, but that was after this went out. So I included a job description from Anita, it's a pretty decent description. Honestly, not quite sure how we all wanna go forward. Mayor and I, we've all been extremely busy just getting started this year. So whether it's gonna be a full council, or you're gonna talk in a work session, or all those are already getting filled up, or whether you wanna create a small subcommittee of the council. And one other thing in your packet that I put together is a list of leadership values, management leadership skills, experience and knowledge. This is not a complete list of what you may or may not be looking for in your next city administrator, it's just a point to get you to start thinking. But what I, and we'll also put this on the website. Be able to get these back from the community. It's very simple, you just go through and you circle the things that you think are very important. This'll just help us build, internally build our, our profile and some of our advertising material for the next city administrator. So that is where we're at.
Any questions?
I've got some loose ones, so you don't have to tear your agenda packet.
Any questions of the city administrator? Yes.
So can we get a copy of the current city administrator position description?
Sure.
All of them, shall I pick one? To the whole council?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Send it out, I can email it to all of you.
Yeah, so, so just for general information, whenever one councillor asks for something, everyone will get it.
Okay.
You're welcome to ask that, I mean, go ahead, Bob.
So as we advertise this, will we also advertise a potential start date for a new administrator?
Yeah, we can, we can definitely put that in the ad, you know, ideally, July one start.
Okay.
Any other questions? Bobby?
Who would be doing all the interviewing? How, do we know, are we just still on the development stages of that? What are we looking at?
The, I've been through a few of these myself. And in general, I'm trying to, Proffman has a, a pretty good one, where you'll have a mix of folks from the community, a panel of employees, department directors usually employees, and then certainly, the, the big, the big one is interview with the city council and the mayor. It also usually includes a tour, one of the staff members will tour the candidate around town. One of the interesting things about the tour is you often find out that, just how this individual candidate actually treats somebody that they may think is a little bit lesser on the staff. And what happens is after those three panels and the tour, everyone gets together in a big room, you debrief, you talk about who your number one and number two candidates were. Council, mayor and council, thanks everybody for their day, and ships everybody out. In an executive session, council will discuss and hopefully make a decision.
Thank you.
We have like a meet and greet, so at the park, like we have before, so that citizens can meet them?
Absolutely. If that, again, you know, all of this is still in flux, and that'll certainly work too.
Okay, so if you have no further questions, let's move, move on to the city recorder's finance report. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
You forgot this gentleman.
Oh, he's, he's at the bottom, I haven't forgotten. He's on the agenda, but I'm glad you're standing on your toes.
So I kinda got confused, I apologize for interrupting.
All right, thank you. So city recorder, finance report, it says.
Your financial report should have been in your box, if you haven't hit them up, they're still there.
Speak up, Suzie.
If you have any questions on anything that you received, go ahead and shoot me an email or a call, make an appointment, we can talk about it at that point. The cash on hand as of December thirty-first, twenty eighteen was nine hundred sixty thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents. A copy of the statement from the LGIP, which had a balance as of December thirty-first of three hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy cents, is attached, as well as the front page of Banner Banks from the general account.
Councillors, I would, do you have any questions? I would encourage you to, to take Suzie up on if she, if you have questions about this, you don't understand what you're looking at, you're looking for something specific but you don't see it, to, to email her, and I believe, is that okay, Suzie, if they email you directly?
That's a better way, yeah.
Okay, email her directly and ask that question. She may be able to answer it quickly, or if you'd like to set up some time with her to talk about it and go over the report and, and ask some instruction on how to read it. So please do that if you feel like you would like to. Can we have a motion to accept it? Oh, you have a question?
I did see that there was an invoice in there from Lady, from Lady Cox. Can you tell us what we've been using them for previously?
I think there are defense or prosecution.
In the municipal court?
Municipal court.
Okay. And then could we get a copy of the GL codes so that we all know what these are tied to for looking at the budget? Thank you.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
Thank you. Second? Call seconds? Call for the vote?
Councilor Berenbourn?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councilor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councilor Whitney?
Aye.
Councilor Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilor Hadley?
Aye.
So I think we're gonna go ahead and mix it up a little bit here and, and move to community services report. You guys don't mind, you're gonna sit over there anyway, right? Okay, good, that was a yes. And what we'll do is do eleven point five point four, the Sasquatch Duro street closure request now. That way we can accommodate our request. So let's see, if you'll go to what this is. Hold on, we're getting there, guys. So I think you have a copy of, of the presentation that he has. Okay. Okay, so this is, I'm getting there. Too many pieces of paper. Oh, yeah, okay. So this agenda title is "Street Closure of First Street from Pine to Oak for Sasquatch Duro Bike Event." City administrator, do you wanna read this, or do you want me to? I'm happy to. Consultation going on over there that might be important. Are we okay over there? Mr. Messina?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're okay? Okay, good, all right. So the proposed council action is a motion from the four and a vote for the street closure. Mr. Ripley is here. He represents the Sasquatch Duro Bike Event. He's requesting a street closure on East First from Pine Street to Oak Street for Saturday, May eighteenth, twenty nineteen, from six AM to five PM. The ride starts at ten AM and proceeds up Oak, finish by coming down Cedar. The duration is a maximum of five minutes to clear the first street through the closure on Cedar. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Wow.
Five minutes in the morning.
Woo-hoo, this is a timed event, with the rollout being slow and the ride down to Westford being slower also. The finish is east of Westford for the riders' time, and then they come back to Oak Ridge for the post-event food and fun. He has provided, provided an application and filled it out for the street closure. And if we can get a motion, then we can open it up for discussion. Actually, would you like to just say a few words? This is the second year you've done this?
Sure, this is the second year. My name's Mike Ripley. I am a Monroe, Oregon resident, grew up in Oregon nineteen sixty-seven. Mom worked at Sacred Heart in the kitchen for thirty-eight years. My family moved here to work in the timber mill. So I'm a latchkey kid and grew up outside in the gravel, and it's a gravel grinding event, which is really mountain biking from nineteen eighty-eight. It's where we all started. So right now, we have sixty people signed up for this event. Last year, we were a hundred and eighteen. Far away is Washington, currently we have somebody from San Diego and about five from Brush Prairie, Washington, signed up, which is kinda neat. Average age is forty-four, go up to seventy-plus. Basically, rolls out of Oak Ridge, goes over to the nineteen-twelve, does a big loop up there, and we finish them over outside of Westford and connect with Oak Ridge Lodge and Westford, and just try to get people here for a quality day experience. We use Eugene Cathcart's property, it's over by where the massage place is across from the museum. If you notice, the weekend before Memorial Weekend, so just encourage people to come here when it's a little slower, get a different kinda crowd, and like I said, I love every outdoor possible recreation. I have fifteen events, and actually, just got the first ever events gonna start in Seven Feathers Casino at the end of June. So I've never done that before, I checked that one off my list, so, never started in a casino, so. I love adventure, and I'm a, I'm a bike rider and father of three, and like I said, just wanted to put a, a face to a name, appreciate the council's time. If anything I can do, what I got from the city last year with Louis was, we picked up barricades at the police department, set them up at six-thirty in the morning, had bike racks, we have a food truck that comes from cowgirl cooking. The whole community's welcome, hopefully have a ban this year, and just make it a stellar, outstanding event, open to, you can contact me anytime, any issues or anything, so.
Thank you, Mike. So I see that you're requesting an alcohol, have an alcohol permit? You're gonna do a beer garden?
Yeah, we'll have a beer that is monitored, not for sale. So it's part of the liability insurance, it's keys, when you have to start selling it, it gets more tricky. So we keep it contained in Eugene's property there, not to exceed past a certain point. We don't, we're not, we're, I usually hurt them quite a bit on the hills. They're not interested in drinking too much, they're probably looking to go to sleep. So I try to punish them as much as possible. So the beer consumption's pretty minor, but it goes along good with a bowl of beans and avocados.
I was just wondering if you might answer that. Does it end up in cottage grove?
Oh, that's nice, that's leftover. No, it does not end up in cottage grove, sir. But that is a nice, we've talked with the city manager about connecting the two communities, so that could happen.
It's run them pretty hard.
It's a hard run. That's for a side-by-side.
Okay, so, so council, this is the first time you've been presented with, with a permit of this kind. It goes through and explains what needs to be closed. It goes through and explains what the particulars are, he wants to do a PA system and a ban. You'll notice that there's alcohol. And so what, what you're doing is giving approval for us to close up that road. City administrators, or anything else I? I missed? Okay, any questions? Okay, can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Bobby.
I move that we approve the request of street closure of the first street from Pine to Oak for the Sasquatch Duro Bike Event on Saturday, May eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, from six AM until five PM.
I hear a second?
I'll second.
Stand second, before you did, you didn't get your hand up.
I didn't hear you, it wasn't like, I have a hearing problem?
Can we, can we call for a vote?
Councilor Hollitt?
Aye.
Councilor Hadley?
Aye.
Councilor Whitney?
Aye.
Councilor Berenbourn?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councilor Holcomb?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, I'll leave an extra copy up here if anybody wants to take it or contact me. I appreciate the community and congratulate... I appreciate the community and congratulations on your new beginning as things move forward. I, I've been a longtime resident, I really appreciate you guys.
Are you gonna be looking for volunteers?
Oh, yes, definitely. We have, uh, Ruski is our announcer. Hopefully she'll be back at Banner Bank, she, she likes the microphone, so that's...
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you, guys. Have a wonderful night.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Now that we've done that...